Good evening and Merry Christmas and welcome everyone that's here in our audience today live and those who are joining us online as well. We're really glad to have you here and participate in our local governance. We do have some people who have filed requests to speak to council. If you have a desire to address city council on anything that's on the agenda, we ask that you fill out this form and you can give it to Cindy at the end. We also open up the first 15 minutes to our meeting to anyone who just wishes to talk to city council about anything that they wish, even if it's not on the agenda. But before we get that far, let's go ahead and start with our roll call, please. Councilmember Dennehy, absent. Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith, absent. Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Here.
Mayor Smith? Here. Let's please rise for our first invocation by Alicia Swarrenjen from the Royal Gorge Vineyard Church and then the Pledge of Religions.
Well, good and gracious Father, we are so thankful for this city and this community and all the people that love this place. Thank you for the people that serve here and that are committing their lives to make this a better community. We pray for wisdom. You say to ask for wisdom, and so we ask for wisdom. And we ask you to bless our time. We ask you to bless those that are in need in our community and families that are in need this year in our community. We just ask these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, where it stands on a mission under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, are there any citizens' requests to speak to council on anything that's not on the agenda? Come on up, Bob.
Is it on?
Yeah.
What a crowd tonight. You guys are going to be busy. Anyhow, I've considered my, the comments I made at our last little get-together regarding the clock tower because I kind of, in some respects, I wandered into other areas which had previously been discussed. At any rate, please forgive me if I offended any of you. It was, certainly wasn't my intent. My content, my, my comments were born of frustration with that discussion about the clock tower plus other discussion that went on as far as the development of the River Quarter and Highway 50, et cetera, et cetera. Anyway, that frustration came from what I was hearing from council members and believe that there seemed to be little, be little to no knowledge of the several committees created several years ago. And by several years ago, I'm talking probably right before Ryan came here. So it hasn't been in the all-too-distant future, but it has been, you know, it has been relatively recent. And it can, the committees were created, created to design a plan for Main Street, Highway 50, and the Riverwalk. It did not seem, again, in my opinion, that any of you were familiar with that or had given consideration to the studies and recommendations that evolved. A couple of dozen randomly selected citizens, I mean, that's us and everybody else in this community, and professional consultants spent roughly a year of meetings and studies and public hearings to develop a master plan for the downtown, Highway 50, and the Riverwalk. The plan took into consideration and often the boisterous objections of the businesses, property owners, and CDOT representatives around the affected areas, most of whom objected to any option presented. These committees diligently worked to create a plan that would at least be least intrusive, yet create an attractive downtown Highway 50, Riverwalk area that compromised on the voice concerns of all the people that came to basically pitch a bitch. There were several iterations of these plans with public hearings, public hearings, not one, but several public hearings, of the plans that the committees developed. These committees settled on ones that would create an atmosphere that would develop the business community, enhance the tourist experience, and create more, a more attractive Canyon City. Though the river development is my personal preference, the clock tower is a start. The money and plan are in place. Currently, there's no timeline. The city doesn't even own the Black Hills property. Who knows how long that, that will be in development? Now is the time to show the community that this council has begun to take serious steps to improve this city. Clock Tower Plaza may not be the big deal that you're seeking for your constituents, but it is a start. Other improvements that need to be made toward the goal of making Canyon a destination, even if clock tower funds are diverted, are future goals that require much more money and planning and further delay. Clock Tower Plaza is here and ready to go now. Let's show our citizens that we're serious and ready to get going. I would encourage, going back a step, each of you to go back and take a look at the hard work of your fellow citizens that were on these committees that developed these plans. Thanks, gang. I appreciate it. I just had to get my two cents in.
Thank you, Bob. We appreciate you being here and giving us a reminder of the complexity of planning projects and executing those projects and the efforts that we take to, to have citizens be participants in that process. And it's something that we do value a lot. So thank you for that reminder. And also, when we talk about that, those years at the beginning, that government speed bureaucracy and that's, it's a slow speed. It takes forever, it seems like, to get these things done. Yeah, and so it's good to remember that it's a process to get from, from where we were to here. It's taken a long time of persistence. Absolutely. It also shows, I like, kind of just that introduction that we don't have a lot of money as a government. So if we have a million here or a million there, that's why we have the comprehensive plan. So if every year we're able to invest a little bit here and a little bit there every year, it's not going to random things, but it's going to a strategic plan that, at the end, will really be something magnificent and beautiful in the end. That's why we have it. And the Clock Tower Plaza and the pedestrian crossing is a part of that comprehensive strategic plan. So thank you. We have another citizen's request. That was Rick Ratslaff. I don't know if he is here tonight. I don't think I see him in the audience. I don't think anyone's online either. If he shows up, maybe we'll give him an opportunity to speak. We'll move on now to council member announcements. Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to draw, well, I've mentioned this to council, but also want to draw the attention of the public to the fact that there is a new display at the Royal Gorge Museum and History Center regarding the history and current status of the Lincoln Park Cotter Superfund Site. A local nonprofit that's been in existence since 2002, and they're called Colorado Citizens Against Toxic Waste, or CCAT, spearheaded this project at the museum. And it's really worth seeing, especially for those of us who maybe don't know all the pieces of the history of how we got a uranium mill south of Canyon City in the 1950s and what's happened since then. So I just wanted to draw everyone's attention to that display.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have a general government meeting Wednesday at 6:00 PM in these chambers preceded by a Urban Renewal Authority meeting. And there will be, both of those meetings will have interesting discussions. And we also have, this is the first Wednesday of the month, and so that's KRLN time. I think the mayor is going, and if any other council member.
I can, unless someone else has a burning desire.
I'd love to have you join me. It'll be my last one.
Oh, that's right. All right.
So thank you for being my buddy.
And one, one further thing. The, although this is not something that's going to be coming to us for decision purposes, but with the, with the recent legislation up in Denver, there, there is a movement afoot since the legislature essentially punted on HH and pushed that authority down to counties to deal with the issue of rising values for homes and the tax structure, that, that there is a move afoot for counties to reduce their mill levies. And so we may, that's not anything that we'll be directly deciding on. We may have to, depending on how things work out, we may have to look at our, our budget again. I'm not sure, but the, that's up to the county commissioners, but it's something that's, that's, that's out there.
Thank you. Councilmember Stein?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. I just wanted to give the public a heads up that I've been looking into the issues surrounding the fact that we no longer have a dialysis clinic here in town. And I've been trying to connect people with resources for rides. And what I discovered from U.S. Representative Pedersen's office is that, which would only affect veterans, but the, there is a line item that's been approved in the budget for the VA for like 25, 26, that we, there, and this is knowing the government as we do. Many things can happen, and it takes a long time, but they are going to have a clinic here in town, which will help at least our veteran population.
Thank you. I would also like to give a really big shout out to the city staff that worked really, really hard to create the tree lighting ceremony this last Friday. It was really exciting to have hundreds of people downtown Makin Plaza. It took our entire Parks Department weeks, and they didn't just put up lights at Makin Plaza, but they're all over town, and it's gorgeous. We love it. So I'd like to say thank you to the entire Parks Department, Denise Warren, Rick Harmon, Kristy Gotham, Susan Lashia, Dave Rodenbeck, Tay Jeffers, and Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus for all that they did. And it was just super, super lovely to be together as a community. And also Cindy, I'm guessing you and Denise, did you guys do all the lovely decorations here tonight?
I haven't.
Oh, it looks really nice. Thank you to you two. All right, Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was actually over at the library earlier today, and there were 709 people that entered the library during the Christmas tree lighting.
Oh, that's more than I thought.
Which is truly, truly spectacular for, for our town. I also just wanted to flag that we'll have our next meeting of the Red Canyon Trails Committee this coming Wednesday as the Parks Department continues to move forward with the limited plan for trails within Red Canyon Park. So looking forward at that meeting to hearing a little bit about the history of Red Canyon Park from the museum director and then engaging the public a bit more as the process moves forward.
Wonderful. Sounds like they're going to be ready to, as soon as you guys finalize your decisions, they'll be ready this spring to start building satellites. That's great.
The goal is to hopefully have some public engagement over the winter and then present something early next year to council for approval.
Nice. Yeah. Now that's something that's actually happening pretty quickly. So I love it.
Absolutely.
Okay. Ryan, can you please go over a consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 7A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on November 6th, the general government meeting on November 8th, the special meeting on November 6th, which was an executive session, and November 7th, which was the prison, Board of Prisons Community Relations Meeting. Item 7B is to accept planning commission, resignation from planning commission. 7C is to reappoint board of adjustment members and accept a resignation. 7D is to approve community agency funding. 7E authorizes vehicle to be declared surplus and disposed of according to city purchasing policy. 7F is to receive and file the 2023 certificate of election official results. 7G authorizes the mayor to sign an agreement with Soul Vista concerning a police department co-responder program. 7H authorizes the city administrator to sign a professional services agreement with Vivid Engineering for the US-50 materials testing. 7I awards bid 7223 roof replacements at the high and low head pump stations to Whitney Roofing in an amount not to exceed $45,333.27. 7J rescinds a change order number one from bid 5323. 7K is to receive and file cash dispersments and P-card dispersments. And 7L is to file a different set of cash dispersments.
Thank you, Chief. Tammy, you're here tonight. Do you want to talk a little bit about the community agency funding?
So we, we did meet with a number of agencies. I'm not sure if Mary Pat is in the audience or not.
She is. She worked really, really hard on it, too.
Yeah, so Mary Pat should come up and speak about this.
Mary Pat, come on up here.
And then we'd also.
She's got the big, huge binder with her, too.
That's right. That's right.
Hey, Mary Pat.
So the city. Okay, thanks. So the city budgeted 55,000, yep, 55,000 in 2024 for community agency grants. And we had, sorry, I cannot remember exactly how many. I want to say 16? Yeah, 16 nonprofit agencies apply for grants for a total of $57,140. And the, sorry. So all of these nonprofits came and spoke with the committee, and we decided to fund a total of $44,940. Some of them, actually the majority of them, we gave the total of what they asked for. One of them, we did not fund them at all. And a few of them, we gave them a little bit less than what they were asking for. So any questions?
Councilmember Tracy?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. And, and thanks, Mary Pat, and everyone who served on the advisory committee this year. I know it's a lot of work and a lot of thought goes into reviewing those applications. Just wondered if we can hear, those of us who weren't on the committee, if we could hear a little bit more, for example, there's a difference between Hope House Canyon City and the Bridge Youth Center, even though the programs sound similar, internet service, high-speed internet, but the amounts awarded are quite different. Is that, is that just a reflection of what they applied for more than anything else?
Well, Hope House, I don't know about their annual bills.
They did put in their budget the amount for their internet. And then also Bridge Youth Center, they also provide us what it is. So they may have different providers, and so there's different monthly fees.
Okay. So that's just basically what they were requesting, even though it looks pretty different between the two organizations.
Correct.
And then I wondered, on JJ's helping pause, I see there's two different programs that they applied for money. And can you say, or can anyone on the committee say anything about why they didn't get the full 3,000 that they requested for their low-cost spay-and-neuter program?
I see fingers pointed in my direction.
No, not at all, but go ahead.
From, from, from someone. The, but on JJ's, the, the issue there, you know, my, my feeling is that's, that's, that's certainly a worthwhile undertaking. But there, there's a, there's a practical problem, and that was that their veterinarian that they use almost exclusively for the spay-and-neuter program was off and is scheduled to be off for, for health reasons. And because of that, they're going to have a hard time spending all the money they requested. That's why we cut that back a little bit. The, the other thing is, is that the, they have, they have talked to the other local veterinarians, but the other local veterinarians are slammed. And if you have animals, small animals, perhaps even large animals, and try to get in to see one of the vets, it's extremely difficult. They're really backed up. And so it was the, the panel's feeling that, that they would not be able to spend the, the funds, the full 3,000 if we awarded it. So that was, that was what the thinking that went into that.
So that doesn't, not that I want to spend too much time talking about just that one item, but I just wondered if it's worth going ahead and allocating the full amount in case they are able to obtain a provider or providers to do the full amount next year that they had budgeted for.
I think that because we have a little bit of money left over, that, and we have a precedent that if, if the need arises, that they can come back to council, and we still have some money in the funds.
So we can just leave that decision till later?
Yeah, we actually had a pretty lengthy discussion about veterinarians that can and can't, and those that are doing it are really, they're doing it out of humanitarian effort and out of the love of their heart for the animal cause. And, and it's, yeah, anyways, there's a lot that went on.
Thanks. And I just didn't, if there was anything more that could be said about the decision on the senior mini-college not being funded, I'm just wondering what the details.
So the senior mini-college, that was a little tough one. I think they showed, there was some miss, maybe some miscommunication. The main person who applied for the grant wasn't able to be there. The other folks showed up thinking that they were coming up to take a picture and to get, to get a check. And so they weren't quite prepared to answer a lot of our questions. And we, the, the funds were specifically requested to provide a really, really fancy, nice lunch for the college. And we just didn't feel that they answered our questions sufficiently to justify that much money being spent on one lunch.
Got it.
Whereas that money could go towards something that could be benefit to a nonprofit for an entire year.
A one day, essentially a one day, one time. And I think that was my feeling on the committee, too, is that, is that, you know, a one day, one lunch, it'd be better to spend that money, spread that money somewhere else.
Okay, thanks. That's all the questions I had.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was wondering, since we had some funds that have not been allocated by the committee, if we might want to consider doing a second round of community agency funding in the spring? I think that that could potentially be helpful as we'll have a new mayor and a new council member joining us. So having their perspectives might be, might be useful. And also, I know a lot of our nonprofits do their year-end planning at the same time that these applications were due. So I think that there were many organizations that didn't necessarily have, you know, the time of year, I think can be difficult for them to specify exactly what it is that they would need because they haven't done their year-end planning when we require the grants. So I was wondering if the rest of council would be amenable to doing a second round of community agency funding with the funds that we have left over to ensure that they go to other worthy nonprofits in our community. Thanks.
I think that's something that you guys can definitely make a decision on as time goes by. It is nice to have a little bit of wiggle room on that because sometimes emergencies or big things arise, and it's nice to have a little bit of a slush fund to take care of some nonprofit or community needs as they may arise. So.
So in, in the past, we've, we've just let the, the agencies come to us if they had changed circumstances or something happened where they identified a potential use of funds. But, but as I understand it, you're suggesting that we make a decision tonight to direct staff to, to put our heads up again, perhaps in April, May timeframe? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, absolutely. And I mean, we, we have a relatively limited amount of funding that's left over, but that $7,000, $8,000 can make a huge difference for nonprofits in our community. And rather than having it be, you know, maybe somebody heard about it so they can stick their head up and ask, I would much rather have a public transparent process where everyone is welcome to apply and we can make a decision in a public transparent manner. Thanks.
I think I might be prudent to put out some feelers to see if it's worth the time for a seven thou, you know, an entire day. I mean, Mary Pat worked really, really hard on this, and for $7,000, I don't know where, you know, where that balance would be for putting that much for, for two, two times a year. I think you could sit on it and maybe decide a little bit later in the year.
I'm, the, the, so let's, what I would suggest, Madam Mayor, is that, is that, that we ask our administrator to bring that back in front of council so that we can decide at that time. How about that? Is that, rather than leave it, you know, amorphous or, you know, not well-defined what we're asking, I think it might be better to say, hey, come back to us in April or in the April timeframe, and let's see, let's see what we want to do as a council at that point.
Right. Yeah, right. Because the amount of work it takes to put on that days and ask for that is really big. But also, there's spend times where maybe a nonprofit's like, hey, I am writing this grant, but I need a match. I could turn that $7,000 or maybe $3,000 into $30,000. And it's nice to be able to have an opportunity to do that if needed. So. Okay. I see that Chief Schick is here. Do you mind coming to talk to us a little bit about the co-responder program and that extension?
Madam Mayor, members of council, do you have questions about the co-responder?
Well, maybe.
MOU?
Well, we have a lot of people here tonight. Can you just kind of give a review of what it is and where we're going with it?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, we can do that. So our co-responder model is a joint pursuit between law enforcement and mental health entities that help us adequately address and respond to folks in the city that are experiencing mental health crisis. And we try to stand up that co-response unit in situations that are not clearly emergencies requiring police services, so that they can handle those and divert those, those calls for service away from our patrol units. So the patrol units can continue working the cases and calls that they have. But they do respond jointly in those emergency situations and work together when we're dealing with certain circumstances or individuals that we think might pose a safety risk to our officers. They work in tandem out of our office. They're equipped with equipment that the city provides, and they bring their expertise into the house and build relationships with our officers and help our officers understand the significance and, and just kind of reinforce the significance of self-care, that sort of thing, just to help the officers out as well. that sort of thing, just to help the officers out as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, I did have a question in the, in our proposed contract. It says the city shall provide adequate space for the coresponder team in the Canyon City Police Department Building.
Yes, sir.
Is that the one at Justice Center Road, or is that the annex?
Yes, sir, that's at Justice Center Road. They have an office right outside the roll call room so that they're in a position to integrate and communicate with our patrol staff regularly.
Do they, do you know, Chief, do they intend to report there for work? I mean, are they going to be working out of that office?
Yes, sir.
Or will they just come in?
They, they report every day to that office. And then they go back over to Sylvista when they have clinical meetings and such.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. Chief Schick, thanks so much for the hard work that the police department does on this really important program.
Yes, ma'am.
Really appreciate your time and efforts on it. I had two requests. One, in the agreement number five, it outlines kind of what the aims and the goals of the program are. And I think one of them, it's just worded slightly awkwardly. And I would appreciate it if we could reword the second one to make it clear that it's really about reducing unnecessary calls for service by police officers involving mental health issues as opposed to just reducing calls for service around mental health. Because obviously, if a police officer needs to respond to a mental health call, they would want to do so. If that would be amenable to you and to the Sylvista CEO.
I provided Mr. Stevens with a copy of that exact language that you offered, Councilwoman Schmisher. I think it summed it up a little more clearly.
Wonderful, thank you so much. I really appreciate that. And then I also, just on the budget, wanted to make sure that we had consistency between the agreement and the budget itself with regard to the number of radios to be provided and whether the vests would be bulletproof or bullet resistant. So I wasn't sure if those modifications have also been...
Those modifications have also been made. And I think I attached the amendments to the email that you had requested. So if it wasn't attached, I apologize.
Oh, no, no, there was an attachment, but I didn't, I didn't see all of those changes in there.
Each of the, each of our co-response partners will have their own ballistic-resistant vest, and they'll have their own radios.
Perfect. Do we need to amend 7G to reflect those changes?
I would just, yeah, as amended when you approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, thank you so much, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other questions on anything on the consent agenda?
I just had an extraneous question.
Sure.
On the election results, I noted that the Colorado Mountain College Board of Trustees resulted in a tie. Is that decided by a coin toss? Does, is that...
It's an automatic recount, or that is the re...
Well, these are the certified results as a tie.
Oh, that's true.
So that...
How many were allowed in there?
We may not know collectively what that, but I was just kind of interested.
Yeah, that's pretty crazy, though, out of that many votes.
Well, there's 28 total, so, for that particular seat, so.
Easy to happen. Every vote counts, for reals. Okay, well, if there, Amy, did you still have some more?
Actually, if I may just address that, and, you know, certainly not the election official, but that vote goes across counties. So there were votes that were cast in Chaffee County as well. So I imagine that that was the tiebreaker.
Oh, thank you.
That makes sense.
Thank you for that.
Good clarification. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Administrator Stevens, I also just wanted to check on 7H. Thank you for providing Exhibit A via email with regard to the scope of services for that agreement of professional services. Is that also something that we can just say as amended when we approve the consent agenda, given that it wasn't in the original package?
Yes, ma'am. And our Public Works Director has reached out to Vivid, and they're fine with that as the amended Exhibit A.
Wonderful, thank you so much for confirming that.
All right, well, we would like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda and agenda as amended for items G and H.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as amended for items 7G and 7H and the agenda as written.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Call vote?
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Councilmember Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you, council, and thank you, staff. Ryan, could we please have our administrator's report now?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. One item that's not in the administrator's report is 2A Streets. So Franklin is substantially complete. The contractor's working on some minor punchless items. Work continues to, for 2A, continues on College between Third and Ninth Street with paving, I believe, next week and hopefully next week. But that project will wrap up 2A for this budget here. In the administrator reports, you know, mentioned, you know, I attended the amusement park trade show in Orlando. We are working towards, you know, the contract for the operator of the Royal Gorge Bridge and Park. That expires in October of 2026. So we're working towards an RFP for, you know, potential operators. Could be the same operator, could be a new operator. We hope to have that out by mid-next year. So attended that conference looking for potential suitors as well as other networking opportunities to see what other opportunities might be available for the bridge and park. The, also in the administrator's report, the feasibility study for the pool is kicking off next week. That first meeting with the committee will take place Wednesday of next week. And then finally, the Public Works Director and our Public Information Officer are working on graphics for 2A to show the progress. What is in the packet showing for 2024 numbers does not include the streets that have been completed so far this year. Those will be updated as the streets are completed.
Nice, I really like it. It's really nice. I'm really excited about the accomplishments. We've gone from 64% failed to poor. Well, it's flipped to 46. 46 is still a really high number, but at least we're below the 50% mark now. It's been huge, it's exciting to see those streets getting fixed. Any other questions for Ryan? Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Administrator Stevens, I just wanted to flag one potential area of miscommunication in the city administrator report. You had mentioned that the downtown merchants aren't interested in the banners hanging off of the flower poles. And I think that they may be. So I would just encourage the city to maybe have additional conversations with downtown merchants to make sure that there's clarity on whether or not they do want to move forward with that proposed concept.
Happy to have some more conversations around that.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to item 9A. And this is an ordinance to refer to committee. And so this is basic, it's not something we're voting on tonight as the ordinance itself, we're just voting that this subject is something that we want to bring to committee and have further conversations about. And that is the feather signs and wall-mounted banner signs. So definitely more opportunity for more conversations on those items. We, you had a pretty nice report in here about the discussions that you have been having with downtown merchants. I'm assuming Ryan LeClair, that you've been a part of those as well. We appreciate you for doing that. Appreciate for the downtown businesses that are here tonight. We know that you have strong interest in this. If there's any more discussion, we can have some discussion about it? Yeah?
Yeah, just one item. You know, previously, there was a moratorium till the end of the year because this isn't actually going before council until next year. And then there's still a process that goes. I would propose extending that moratorium to the end of February.
Does that need to be done by vote or just by...?
As long as that's the direction of council, that's...
I feel like if this goes to committee, then that would be, given that it would be, the moratorium would be extended. Any discussion on this? Okay, I'm ready to take a motion? Yes, Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Madam Mayor, I've moved that we refer the attached draft ordinance to the council's General Government Committee meeting of January 3rd for discussion and staff direction.
Second. There's been a motion and a second for this to go to January 3rd. So mark your calendar, January 3rd is when it's going to go to general government. Great time to really have some robust conversations for this potential ordinance. Until then, if this passes, there will continue to be a moratorium. Any discussion? All right, let's take a vote on taking this to committee.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
All right, we will see y'all on January 3rd, then, have more discussions. Thank you. We really appreciate the cooperation between the city and the merchants to do what's best for everybody. It's time to move to item 9B. This is introduction adoption by title only of Resolution 18, series of 2023, a resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, concerning the city's 2024 pay structure.
We'll invite Human Resources Director Butch Batchelder to come up and present.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Previously, you approved the cost of living for 2024 for our employees. This merely adjusts the wage scale for the positions, and we've adjusted it by 3% to prevent some compression between our current employees and new employees that we may hire, given that we don't have a formal step process within the city at this point. So it would be just a standard 3% for all of the positions.
Okay. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks so much, Director Batchelder. Could you please give us a little bit more clarity on why we don't have that formal step process yet? I think when we did, the pay analysis, was it a year and a half ago at this point? That included ranges for all of the positions so that employees could move with experience. Do we envision having a formal step process in the future once the individual performance plans begin to be done? Or what does this look like in out years? Thanks.
So some municipalities actually have built into their pay structure a step based on longevity or seniority. So once an individual, say, for example, each year, they experience somewhat of an increase, depending on what it's set at, so that the longer they're with the organization, the more they, their wages increase instead of hiring at a certain range. And they stay there, with the exception of the annual COLA increases. So this, the city hasn't adopted anything like that. That would be an action by council to approve that.
And not to be confused with the merit increases. So there will be merit increases that don't follow a formal step program.
Absolutely. And I may be misremembering or misunderstanding what the goal was when we approved that pay, comprehensive pay analysis. Was it 18 months ago, Director Nordike? But I thought that we established a range for each position and that we would be having a formal step process in the coming year so that employees would move with longevity so that we didn't have this compression issue.
No, I think, you know, so we ingrate people, you know, based off their experience when they come into the city. And then, once they're in the city, it's going to be the merit process that moves them within the bands themselves. So that no formal step process was going to be adopted as part of the pay plan.
Okay, thank you so much for that clarification. I really appreciate it.
Any, anything else from councilmembers? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion for Resolution 18, series of 2023. Sure.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve on first reading Resolution Number 18, series of 2023.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call of vote?
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
All right, well, thank you, Butch, for your work on this, and Timmy as well. And thanks to all of our staff that work really hard on the behalf of Canyon City. Item 9C is the introduction and adoption by title only of Resolution 19, series of 2023, entitled "A Resolution of the City of Canyon City Establishing the Canyon City Public Arts Committee." I'm really excited about this. So who are we going to hear from first?
I will start. So previously, the city had a public arts committee. It was disbanded back in 2017. We would like to reestablish a public arts committee. I think public art is important to the vitality of the community. And we have been having some requests for various public art installations. And to assist with that, it'd be nice to have a public art committee to help evaluate what those installations might look like. And so this, the resolution that you have in front of you is we use the previous resolution, which instituted the previous public arts committee as a template. So it's really about encouraging that civic engagement, this community pride, helping with economic development. And I will turn it over to our small business liaison, Ryan LeClaire, who put this together, add any additional comments or feedback.
No, I think Administrator Stevens summed it up pretty well. But we kind of just want to get the ball rolling and get this committee established. Like City Administrator Stevens said, we've had requests for public art to be displayed on Main Street and in the right-of-way murals, sculpture art down by the river and things like that. So we just wanted to kick this off and get things in order so we're able to approve these things and potentially set something up for the future for bigger aspirations.
Fantastic.
One more thing to add is, you know, we do see this as a step towards creating a creative district in the downtown corridor as well. And we do see that as a big action step for this committee.
Yeah, that would be absolutely awesome. Councilmember Stein?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just wondering if anyone can explain, why was the committee dissolved? Was there an issue or just lack of interest? What happened?
You know, that was before my time or right as I was coming on at the city. I don't really have the details.
I have some vague memories. There are a lot of older people, a lot of them have passed away. And then there was also just maybe some things had gotten tense and it sounded like maybe it was, we needed to take a little break. And so that's what happened. And it sounds like it's time, by popular demand and need, to start anew and really get going.
Well, sometimes it's useful to know a little bit about history so we don't repeat our mistakes. So it would be nice if maybe we could reach out to someone who was on that committee, if they're still alive. And see...
Maybe there's somebody here, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe, if anyone in the audience, feel free to chip in. I think it's important to know, because this is our... Canyon City has its own culture. And we need, we need to be aware of that, we need to respect it. And we need to kind of, you know, look at that, what happened? And how can we structure going forward to avoid that sort of thing? Thanks.
Absolutely. Speaking of hearing from somebody, we do have a request. Does, dress council, is that okay, Amy, if we invite them up first? And that would be India Beach, if you're here. We'd love to hear from you. We have a three-minute time. Looks like, oh, are you representing everybody? I like it. I like it a lot. I see the unity, this is good.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. I'm here with Fremont Center for the Arts to present our letter in regard to the proposed arts committee. Art plays a vital role in our society, enriching our lives in countless ways. It provides us with a means of self-expression, allows us to connect with others on a deeper level, and helps us to understand the world around us. Art can be a powerful tool for social change, challenging our perspectives and inspiring us to create a better future. For these reasons and more, the Fremont Center for the Arts, which was founded in 1947 and is the oldest continuously privately-run art center west of the Mississippi River, strongly supports the creation of a Canyon City Arts Committee. We believe that an investment in an art committee is an investment in our future, ensuring that Canyon City ensuring that Canyon City remains a vibrant, engaging, and culturally-rich place to live, work, and visit. Additionally, art committees provide invaluable support to artists, offering them a platform to showcase their work and gain recognition. They organize exhibitions, workshops, and other events that create opportunities for artists to connect with audiences and potential patrons. Excuse me? A well-functioning art community would work in collaboration with FCA and other stakeholders to develop and implement an art program for Canyon City, organize art exhibits and events, provide educational opportunities about art, and advocate for the arts within Canyon City. Supporting art committees is an investment in the future of communities. By nurturing artistic talent, enriching community life, revitalizing public spaces, and promoting economic vitality, art committees lay the foundation for a thriving and culturally diverse future. FCA urges each of you to give the creation of an arts committee your full consideration. We are confident that an art committee will be a positive contribution to Canyon City and the Fremont County Arts Community as a whole. Thank you for your time.
Wonderful, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak while you're up here? So, as I said, I, I love, I love you all standing together for this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we'll move on to Councilmember Schmisher, then I have a question for Ryan LeClaire.
I do have a question, Madam Mayor. So, following the creation, should this pass? Fingers crossed. Um, is there gonna be an outline as far as applicants for the committee? Um, is there gonna be a process that will be unveiled?
Let's address that. So we, um, when we will advertise saying we're accepting letters of interest, we'll have a deadline for that. And then, it'll come to city council, we'll invite everyone who submitted a letter to come answer questions from the city council, and then we will vote to approve those members of the committee.
Perfect, thank you.
And when, do we know what that deadline is yet? No?
We, we typically advertise for about thirty days, so that we, we would, you know, recommend council advertise for thirty days.
Especially with the holidays, I would suggest even maybe going out a little more than that. Holidays is a hard time to advertise.
Good point. And it'll be mainly social media and the other avenues of communication?
Typically, social media, then reaching out to various networks. Uh, we'd, you know, we'd rely on Ryan to reach out to some of the arts community, uh, through, you know, the different galleries. Um, and then, you know, we've, you know, we've also talked to the museum and the library, um, about reaching out to their networks as well.
It will also be published in the newspaper.
So, we can ask, um, for the FCA, when, when that does go out, can you please help spread the word to our, our art community, to make sure that those people who are interested, that they apply? Wonderful, thank you. All right, Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. And thank you so much, Ms. Beach, for those very, or sorry, Director Beach, for those very inspiring words. Um, really appreciate you guys being here tonight and showing your support for art in our community. Um, I just wanted to echo and support Councilwoman Stein's, um, remarks about looking into the history. We had two members of the previously, previous incarnation of the public arts committee serve on the Creative Crosswalks Committee, um, and I'm sure that they would be happy to provide some of that history, to make sure that we're setting ourselves up for success and ensuring that, um, that we, uh, move this process forward in the best possible fashion. So just wanted to echo and support, um, your, your excellent suggestion. I also had a couple of specific line edit suggested changes to the resolution. Um, I think some of it may just be because they're holdovers from the, the previous incarnation, and I know a lot of work has been done in terms of how committees are formed, um, and stood up in Canyon, so just for a little bit of consistency's sake as well. Um, the suggested edits that I would have are number three. Um, the, right now, it says the committee will act in an independent fashion and serve as the principal coordinating body for the advancement of arts with, in Canyon City. Um, I don't think we necessarily need them to act in an independent fashion. I think we would want them to work closely with the city and that we would, um, you know, that it would be a, a close partnership, I would imagine. So I would suggest that we strike "act in an independent fashion" and. Um, and then, under five A, it says the committee shall consist of seven members as follows. Um, five public members, who will be appointed by and serve at the pleasure of the Canyon City Council, shall be persons over the age of eighteen, who reside within or near the boundaries of the city. I would suggest that we strike "over the age of eighteen." I think this is something that we might have folks who are sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, who are active artists already, who wanna bring that kind of life and vitality. Um, we don't have this requirement for any of our other committees, and I see this one as one in particular, where it could be really exciting to have some young voices, um, getting involved in civic engagement. So I would just suggest that we strike "over the age of eighteen." Um, and then, five B, uh, it says, "One member will serve as a liaison to the city." And I think that that's just a little bit confusing, 'cause we aren't suggesting that one of these members would serve as a liaison to the city. I think we're suggesting a city staff member would, would serve on the committee, or would serve as a liaison to the committee. So I would just suggest that we revise it to say, "One member will serve as a staff liaison to the committee, as appointed by the city administrator." Um, and then, just, I guess, for council consideration, right now, C, um, says that one current member of city council will be appointed by the mayor. I think we've been having two members of city council serve on various committees. I think if we have interest by more than one member, that we may want to increase that, just so that if, if more than one person wants to serve in this capacity, um, we are able to. And then, I also wanted to flag that this, the structure of how members are selected after that first application process is, it's set up a little bit different in this one than, than what we currently do, in that the committee itself would choose people, um, to fill vacancies. And I'm just not sure if we want to have it that way, or if we wanna have it set up the same way that all of our other committees are set up, in which we fill the vacancies.
Yeah, well, originally, it was very independent. Like, we actually had, I think, very little to do with the art committee. So if we set it up, I mean, it's, I guess it's up to us, and that's something that's different as far as like, that we didn't have it for, is that, I'm assuming that Ryan LeClaire, our small business liaison, is, uh, going to be a part of this, is that right? I don't wanna be assertive here, but yes.
Yes, that, that is, um, that is the intent.
That's something that didn't happen before. So, that might be one of those ingredients of success, to help make things move a little more smoothly, and to have that liaison and, and that cooperation and the councilmembers there as well.
And then, the very last few, apologies, but I have so many, but this is something that's obviously very near and dear to my heart. Um, I would suggest that, right now, it says that they should propose bylaws to be submitted to the city council. I don't necessarily know that that's necessary. Um, so I would suggest that we strike six A, and then, change, um, the next one says, "Identify suitable art objects for," and then lists different places it could be. I would say maybe art projects, to make it a little bit broader in terms of the type of art that, um, that they may be able to find. And then, lastly, E says, "Describe the funding process," that, sorry, "describe the funding opportunities for promoting public art." And I would say maybe explore the funding, uh, opportunities, um, 'cause I think we would really want them to dig into what the source, possible sources of funding are. And then, maybe also, uh, directly calling out and establishing a creative district, if that is one of our primary goals and something that I know we would all love to see. Making that part of their initial charter, I think, could be really powerful. So I know those are a lot of proposed changes, um, but for, for council's consideration, that is what I would suggest. Thank you.
And the only one I have a little bit of concern about would be striking out bylaws. If there is a committee that could have a lot of really passionate people, with strong feelings, sometimes it's good to have some rules and guidelines to help make sure it functions properly. You can always turn back to the black and white to make sure you're functioning the way it should, and could hopefully make it more functional.
I can certainly understand that and appreciate that.
Any other comments from council? Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the, um, I, I agree with, with, uh, with, with all that's been said, and the suggestions for improvement, including kinda going back and forth on bylaws or not. And probably bylaws would be a good idea. Uh, but, but I think that, right now, it's, it's, it's kind of mushy, what, how, how we choose new city committee members. Do we have, do we have proposed language or something? I mean, we are passing an ordinance, so the, the words are a-
A resolution.
Resolution, thank you. Uh, so the words do, do matter, and we need to get the words right. So, the, what, what, the, my, I'm just concerned that we need to, we need to be specific about what the words say and what we intend to happen.
So if council is comfortable with the idea of doing it as we do the other ones, which would be two city council members selected by council, I would suggest that we use that same language, um, as opposed to the language that had been, um, I think, used in previous committee formations, which is one city council member appointed by the mayor. But if there aren't other city council members that are interested in serving, I don't, I don't know that it, it necessarily matters too, too much.
Mm-hmm, that, that, that's not where my concern is. I, I appreciate that, and, and I, I agree with that, with the two, but the, um, what we're setting this up is for the, for the members of the committee to select replacements. That's what I, that's what, that's where, I understood you had a concern, and I, I have that concern too. To me, that, that may be what, um, what, what may have contributed to the, to the, um, not success or to the demise of the previous committee. I think it should be a, a council decision about committee members.
But may not know the intricacies of what's needed either.
I would recommend, then, that we just strike the last sentence of five C, um, or sorry, the last two sentences of five C, um, which essentially prescribes that the committee will select their own members, moving, like, after the initial terms are over. I think that would bring it into consistency with the way that the other committees are structured, um, while not necessarily prescribing the exact process that council would follow. But defer to Attorney Hoffman if there are, there's a better way to formulate that.
I have not been involved in creating this at all. So, um, it's really council's prerogative in terms of how it wants to do this, and whether it wants a recommendation from the committee or not, and it sounds like not.
And if I'm remembering correctly, on the last committees we've just formed, you do not say how you'll replace them. We've always just went back to council.
It's just an assumption.
But it has not been stated specifically in the resolution on the other ones.
Otherwise, I, I was just gonna say, just, just say that the city council shall receive and review all applications from qualified persons seeking appointment.
So no recommendation from the committee at all?
They can, the committee's always free to encourage members or members of the public to apply.
Okay, but no recommendation as part of the process?
So just tracking the last two sentences, and that actually gives some flexibility in case the committee has some strong feelings, that there's some flexibility in how that process could be done. Ryan, did you have anything you wanted to add? You're gonna give me the eye.
It wasn't not intended. Um, I, so, a- at this point, uh, I guess, need direction, are bylaws staying in or, or coming out?
Staying in.
Staying in? Okay. And then, B, identify suitable art projects? Okay? Uh, so that would create the, uh, then we would also create the addition of G, which is to establish a creative district?
Um, I had formulated it as kind of E, "Explore funding opportunities for promoting public art and establishing a creative district," but I'm happy to have it as two separate line items, either way.
Um, looks like there was also clarifying on five B, that it would, um, one member will serve as a staff liaison. And I would recommend for five C, having one to two current members of the city council, just so we, we don't, there's not a requirement for two, but there's some wiggle room there.
And selected by council or appointed by the mayor?
Or? Selected by council.
Okay.
Well, what do you guys want, I guess? Could go either way, 'cause there's some committees that the mayor does appoint. Should we just keep it by the mayor?
I'm, I'm good with that.
You, you can also kinda do a hybrid, which many do, which is selected by the mayor with the consent of the governing body. So you kinda do both.
With consent of the council. Selected by the mayor with consent of the council.
Sure.
And then, I also have the striking "over the age of eighteen" in five A, and striking "act in an independent fashion" and in number three.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions or comments or suggestions from the city council? If, oh, Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks. Um, the only question that occurred to me before the meeting tonight was just, uh, whether any of this connects to the potential for perhaps city funding in the future for a public arts process. And I, that's not necessarily anything to decide tonight, but just something to think about. Or, is the thought that the creative district would be a taxing district? I'm not clear what we're thinking of in terms of potential funding.
The creative district is a designation by the state, and oftentimes, there are grant and funding opportunities through the creation of a creative district. Uh, I think as we establish a public arts committee, and we move through the budget process next year, I would expect a budget request to come from the public arts committee for some type of public art project.
There's also some money floating around in the community agency? Considering on what kind of requests may be made. Councilmember Schmisher?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution of the city of Canyon City for the creation of a public art committee.
As amended?
As amended.
As heavily amended?
As heavily amended by myself.
Second?
Okay, there's been a motion in the second, any further discussion? Yes.
One other consideration, if you're adding two councilmembers, you're gonna have an even number, is that a concern of council?
Well, we might have an even number.
Might have an even number.
And it also depends on who's attending. I think for now, we're good, and we can, we can adjust if needed. All right, I'll call a vote, please.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Wonderful, it has passed, so please keep your eyes out. Yeah, wonderful, yeah. Definitely a moment to celebrate another step forward for Canyon City. Thank you all for being here tonight and for your support for this important advancement for art in Canyon City.
Mayor?
Yes?
Are you choosing tonight who's interested?
No, let, let's wait.
Until after the other, okay, perfect.
We usually do it at the same time, we're selecting the committee members.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Um, we are now moving forward in a series of second readings. The first one is nine D. The second reading is for ordinance eleven, series of twenty twenty-three. This is concerning the use of private wells upon connection to the city's water system. Ryan?
Uh, this is a second reading, I don't, uh, Travis, if we had any additional public comment? No? Nope. No additional comments from the public, and staff would recommend passing on second reading.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I do, the, as, as chair of the Water Committee, uh, the Water Kit Committee did discuss, uh, the ordinance and go over, uh, in detail, uh, and discuss what was intended, and we, the committee made sure the language was, uh, commensurate to that task, uh, and recommended, um, approval of the ordinance.
Wonderful. Do you have anything you'd like to add, Travis?
Uh, just that it was brought to our attention in, uh, the first, uh, non-bolded paragraph, the whereas paragraph, um, should read "upon connection to the city's water system." So I would just, uh, recommend, uh, approval of second reading with that change.
With that amendment?
Yeah.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Uh, Superintendent Payne took the words out of my mouth.
All right, well, would somebody like to make that motion with the amendment?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number eleven, series of twenty twenty-three, with the amendment that we amend the whereas to read "upon connection to the city's water systems."
Second?
All right, we have received a motion, and a second, any further discussion? I'll call a vote.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you so much. We are now ready for item nine E, and this is second reading for ordinance fourteen of twenty twenty-three. This is the appropriating sums of money to various funds and amounts, and for the purposes set forth below for the twenty twenty-four budget year.
Again, this is a second reading, and staff would recommend, uh, passing on its second reading. We've not received any, uh, public comments since the first reading.
Councilmember Tracy?
I move, uh, for approval of ordinance number fourteen, series of twenty twenty-three on second reading.
Second?
There's been a motion and a second, any further discussion? Call vote.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Thank you. Item nine F is the second reading for, reading for ordinance fifteen of twenty twenty-three. This is the calculation for the stormwater management fees for the stormwater utility enterprise.
Again, this is a- Again, this is a second reading. Uh, Tammy, have you received any public comment?
No.
Uh, we've not received any additional public comments on, uh, the water, or the stormwater rates, and staff would recommend passing on second reading.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we accept, uh, ordinance number fifteen, series of twenty-three, twenty twenty-three on second reading.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Call a vote.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Fantastic. Now, we're on to nine G, ordinance sixteen of twenty twenty-three. This is for the schedule for the Canyon City Water Department, um, ske- water rate schedules for our water enterprise.
Again, this is a second reading. Uh, we have not received any additional public comments, and staff would recommend passing on second reading.
Is there a motion? Yes.
Madam Mayor, I, uh, move that we approve ordinance sixteen, series of twenty twenty-three on second reading.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion? Call a vote.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you again. We're back to first readings. So, we have, um, item nine H, which is the introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance seventeen, series of twenty twenty-three, entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Amending Certain Sections of Chapter three point one three of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Use, Tax, Reporting, and Audit."
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this went before the city council at the general government meeting on November eighth, and I will pass it over to Finance Director Tammy Nordeig to give a report.
So, this is our first reading for ordinance seventeen, series of twenty twenty-three. Um, as City Administrator Stevens reported, we did present this at the November eighth general government meeting. Um, staff, um, has provided a list of the items that were subject to use tax to the business that was in attendance that night. Um, and then also, we are working on coming up with the FAQs. Um, the FAQs do not necessarily, they do not relate to the changes that we're proposing to the ordinance at this, at this time. The FAQs are more so what is subject to the use tax, um, and what is, is not. Um, and then no changes have been made to the ordinance since it was presented at the general government meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks so much for that update, Director Nordeig. I just wanted to clarify, will those FAQs be ready by second reading? I'd just love to have them available and on the website so that folks can see them before the ordinance is passed.
So, since they, I'm not sure which way we want to have those presented, because they do not relate to the changes that are proposed in this ordinance, 'cause this ordinance is establishing when the deadline is and how we can audit. Um, so, I'm not sure if we want to have that presented along with the ordinance or just in the administrator report. So, that's something that we will, we will have to, have to decide.
I guess for clarity's sake, I don't think it should be attached to the ordinance in any way, but I would love for it to be available to the public when the ordinance goes into effect, so that as folks have questions, they have that document that they can reference, if that makes sense.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have a FAQ available by the second reading.
Great, thank you so much.
All right, any further questions from staff? Would like to take a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to move that we adopt, uh, in first reading, the ordinance number seventeen, series of twenty twenty-three.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Call a vote.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. This will go to second reading. We'll see it the next meeting in city council, right? Thank you. All right, the last item of business is nine I. This is the introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance eighteen, series of twenty twenty-three, entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Removing the Sunset Provision in Section ten point ten point zero eight zero of the Canyon City Municipal Code and Adopting a Review Process for Its UTV Regulations."
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, this is a first reading. This also went to general government on November eighth for discussion. Uh, during that discussion, it was, uh, asked to include that review period, which we did. That triggers upon the county adding, uh, UTVs as improved use. Uh, we do have Chief Schick, uh, here to, uh, answer any questions about UTVs and maybe even provide a little bit of clarification about, um, some of the conversations with the county and where they are with UTVs.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Um, our actions, enforcement actions, and, uh, accidents involving UTVs over twenty twenty-three are very negligible, uh, very low numbers. Um, I, and when I say low, I mean very low. Uh, so, uh, it's been a lot of compliance, I think, on, uh, the city, uh, UTV use. Um, conversations that I've had offline with the sheriff and undersheriff and other county employees, um, not favorable towards, uh, a county ordinance in this regard. Um, beyond that, that's about all I can tell you.
Sure, that's okay. I, I would like to give a commendation. We, I did have one citizen that was having multiple issues with a neighbor, wasn't a UTV, but it was an ATV, maybe feeling emboldened to be using it because, when this, after this ordinance had been passed, and he was having a lot of frustrations, but Chief, you, um, you and your officers have resolved it. He just recently sent me a message saying, "Thank you, there hasn't been any problems since."
Oh, that's wonderful.
So-
Good to hear.
So, thank you. Anything else from council?
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you, Chief. Well, I say let's make a motion. Councilmember Tracy?
I move that we approve ordinance number eighteen, series of twenty twenty-three on first reading.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Call a vote.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. Meeting's adjourned.